All this meeting of June 4th, 2018 to order. And do ask that you would stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Filkins?
Here.
This time, looking for an approval of the agenda, we do have an amendment, as you can see.
I would go ahead and make the motion to approve the agenda as amended to add an appointment to the CWTA after the communications section of the agenda.
Support. Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask if you come forward, that you state your first name, and then also write your full name and address for the clerk. And also, if you could keep your comments, three minutes or less.
Okay. I'm not sure, this is where I make my comments, but I am Billy Ritsuma. I'm a dentist in town. And I was wondering if we could address public water fluoridation again. I have some handouts. My son Cole is pre-dental, and he put together a packet. I don't expect you to read them right now. I can come back after you've looked over this. I think it's a good idea. I think there's grant money to be had. I think cavities are a big issue around here, and it's been proven that water fluoridation works. It reduces, you know, and now they've got us doing opioid, you know, paperwork. Now we have to sign, have the patient sign if we prescribe a drug, and almost half come in pain. So, I just think it's time to look at it again.
If you wouldn't mind leaving a copy with the city clerk, that'd be great, and then we can get it to the whole city council.
I have four, I have five packets.
Well, we could still just...
Okay, all right, I'll leave them. And if you, would you let me know if you want me to come back? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stick this page in here, 'cause that kinda wraps this one. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Tim Alabas, 705 Washington Street, Cadillac, Michigan. I usually don't script my appearances before this esteemed group of men and women, but this is kind of a big deal, so I, I just typed out a little bit for all of you. Thank you for your opportunity to speak before the city manager, mayor, and the city council. It's always a pleasure to stand up here in front of you. I'm here to report on our two new pickleball courts located at Diggins Hill. To coin an old phrase, "The people have spoken, now let them act." And you know, quite frankly, I'm not sure that's an old saying or not. I just, honestly, just kinda popped in my head, and I thought I'd jot it down. So, it sounds kinda good. Might not be true, but I kinda like it. I'm happy to inform you, the pickleball people are certainly acting by using our two new tennis courts up at Diggins Hill. Another person I must say thank you to is, excuse me, Mr. Ken Payne at the City Garage. He was simply wonderful to plan out the courts and execute putting the two courts together. Drilling the hole, setting the concrete, and placing the posts with the nets completed the job. Many thanks to Ken, he was fabulous to work with. And I assured Ken that in the very near future, he might find a little extra stipend in his pay envelope from the city council because he was so spectacular. You can call me a liar if you want to later, that's okay. I don't care. Next to our city manager, Marcus, of course. I shall now refer to Marcus as "Make It Happen," Marcus. I shall now refer to, as "Make It Happen," Marcus. "Make It Happen" were the words of Marcus concerning getting this project done. So, forever, "Make It Happen," Marcus. Lastly, our humble mayor and the city council members. You were wonderful in your support of this project for our beautiful city. Thank you for thinking of our people in and around the Cadillac area. This adventure certainly has a happy ending, something we desperately need in our country nowadays. Thank you so much for your cooperation and your financial aid. And Ken at the City Garage, as I said, was fantastic. The courts have been up for about two weeks now, and they're being used. I played this morning myself, again. So, at this time, if you have any questions for me, I know I, I timed myself, so I'm well under three minutes, so I can't be chastised for that this time. But if you have any questions, let's hear them.
Just a comment, I played on the courts.
Oh, good.
They were great.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's tickled pink, and I, I think it's going to be used a whole bunch for people in and around the city of Cadillac. So, thank you all for your cooperation, and especially the City Garage, of course, did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and move on to the, to the approval of the consent agenda. And the consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting of May 21st, along with the minutes from the closed session from May 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. This evening, we do have a community spotlight. Marcus, would you like to introduce?
Um, yes, just very briefly, the first, we have two this evening. Thank you, mayor. The first one is the Wexford County Council and Agent Kathy Kimmel. If you'd please step forward.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me, and I'll keep it short. I have been on a mission the last couple months to try and get out to all the public community meetings, the township meetings. I'm on the agenda for Wexford County for Wednesday evening, just trying to get out and raise everyone's awareness to our agency, just a prompt, a reminder, a gentle reminder again, that we're there, and some of the services that we provide and ways we can help older adults in the community. The agency's been in existence, Wexford County Council and Agent, since 1975. I've been the director since December of 2014, after a longstanding, a prior director, been there 27 years. So, we went from a $50,000 a year budget, which is what the agency had in about 1975, to now we're at about a $1.5, $1.6 million annual budget, with a little over $900,000 of that being senior service mileage dollars that we all, as Wexford County taxpayers, vote for. Wexford County contracts with our agency to be the expert in senior services for the county, and to help delegate and allocate that funding. So, we not only provide services ourselves to older adults in the community, the services we provide are in-home care, help with bathing, help with respite in the home, plus we have an adult daycare home located by the hospital, that provides a out-of-home respite, door-to-door transportation for anyone that requires a caregiver. We have, just to give you an idea of the volume of what we do, we have about 270 in-home clients that we serve in a month's time, with those in-home services of homemaking and personal care. We have nurses on staff that provide foot care and do medication management and med setups. We do a lot of wellness checks, a lot of the, even the local businesses, banks, come to know our agency and trust our agency, to know that they can give us a call, we'll go drop what we're doing, somebody will, and go make a visit and make sure someone is being taken care of or is doing well. A lot of those cases are very uneventful, and an example I'm gonna use, I'll use two of them. A local bank had an elderly woman who was in her 80s, who always visited their institution every Wednesday between a two-hour gap of time, and they hadn't seen her for three weeks. They tried to call the phone number they had on file and couldn't get ahold of her, didn't find, couldn't find any family, so they called us. One of my nurses went and visited, and it happened to be a very happy situation, where she had been in and had her knee replacement done, had a daughter and a grandson staying with her to help her rehabilitate, and she was doing well and was happy, and things were great. Another example that we had a couple months ago, actually came about from a local hair salon owner here in town, who had the same elderly woman from the Mises area, who was in every other week to have her hair done, and she hadn't seen her. So, she had reached out, she was concerned, tried to contact her. Just so happened, again, it was the same nurse, happened to go into that hair salon on a Saturday morning and got her hair done, and the owner of the salon took her aside and mentioned it. And my nurse Erin went and visited this woman north of Matton on a Saturday. She took her husband Saturday afternoon outside of normal business hours, and they knocked on the doors and knocked on the windows and saw someone inside. I'm gonna say this was early March, so it was still pretty chilly outside, saw someone in a recliner chair through the living room window wrapped up in a blanket. Well, this woman was like 87 years old. She had gotten ill, wasn't able to write out checks and pay her bills herself anymore, she was too unsteady. So, her heat had been shut off, her electricity had been shut off. She, we don't know how long it had been since she ate. They were able to help get her safe and secure, and they went to the local restaurant in Mises, and they donated food for her. And then Erin spent time contacting family who lived out of state, and all the utility service providers to get her bills paid, so all of those utilities could get turned back on. In the meantime, she's taken a fall-in and been in Samaritan, but I don't know, we're thinking she'd been there two or three days. How do you know? How do you know that people that are out there and living independently, trying to take care of themselves, are actually able to do that? And then to be able to find people you can trust to go investigate those kinds of situations, it's pretty unique. We do a lot of case management. We do, we have a very robust Medicare/Medicaid assistance program, where we help educate people as they're aging into Medicare or turning 65, about what their options are. There's a lot of choices when it comes to receiving Medicare, as to how you're gonna receive that and what that's gonna look like. We actually were, just received the annual, annual report about two weeks ago, they, for that MAP program is what we call it, the Medicare/Medicaid Assistance Program, and they look at tracking how the services are provided across the state, and they look at the percentage of people that are older adults you're touching in your community with that program. And across the state of Michigan, Wexford County, and little Cadillac, northern Michigan here, was the top, top service providing county for that particular program. Most, even the counties in the more, where there's more heavily populated, they were touching, the percentage of seniors they were touching based on their population was between 5 and 10 percent, and Wexford County's touching just over 26 percent of the older adult base here in this county, to help them with Medicare and Medicaid issues. That's a big deal. We're very proud of that. That's, there's some people, that's the only help they get from us, is once a year to have their benefits reviewed and make sure their coverage is gonna be good. We're excited. We're trying to, we've, we've come up with a new logo, we're trying to rebrand ourselves, we're trying to get out in the public eye, which is something that hadn't been done for a long time. We want people to be familiar with our agency, and know that that's an agency that can be trusted, and that we go above and beyond and try to do anything we can to help older adults in the community. We also provide funding to other service providers in the area that provide services that we don't for the older adults. We provide funding to the Local Meals on Wheels program, to the Cadillac Senior Center, to the Matton Senior Center. It takes a village, and if any of you look at census numbers and look at statistics, that older population in the state of Michigan is growing by leaps and bounds. And again, it takes all of us to step in and communicate and try to help to make that successful, and to help people remain independent and healthy in their homes. Again, I just wanted to be on the radar, so that if any of you have loved ones or neighbors or come across any situations where someone can use some help, you know, someone that you can trust that you can call. That's why I'm here. I brought information, newsletters, brochures, those kinds of things. I'd like to leave them if I could. And that's all I've got. Any of you have any questions? Thank you for your, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Great stories.
I love that it's community members noticing. That's something that you don't find every place. You know, the bank, the hairdressers.
The banks, the hairdressers. We've had, Honor State Bank in Buckley call us about an elderly gentleman in his 80s who can't hear and lives by himself, and is very paranoid, and his electric bill has quadrupled in the last three months, and they don't know if somebody's feeding off it or what's, but they call us. And if we can't fix it or find out how to fix it, we're gonna connect them with a trustworthy resource that can.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. The next community spotlight this evening is with respect to the Shop with a Cop program. I'd like to introduce Sergeant Nick Bertram, who will come up. There are also members from the Disabled American Veterans Group here in the audience as well.
All right. Mayor Filkins, councilmembers, Manager Pescha, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up and speak here about this. So, Captain Eller would have been here to present this, but he has had some other obligations, so he asked me to do this in his stead. So, the reason I have this group here with, with this award that I've prepared for them is I just wanted to recognize their efforts in the 2017 Shop with a Cop program that we did. We started this in 2016, so this, last year was the second year that we did this, so I don't know if you guys are familiar with the program, but we had schools pick out students from each of the schools, and we had an officer that went and shopped with them for their family. I obtained donations from Meyer. They donated a lot of money for all these students to buy presents for their families. We took them out to dinner in 2016, and I got some busing from CWTA. So, 2017 rolls around, and this group here had contacted our office, I believe, and was looking for a way to contribute some of their funds back to the community in a donation. So, I ended up going to talk to them, and you know, kind of hashed out what, what my plan was, and I, I'm kind of a do-it-bigger, better-every-year kinda guy, so I said, "Well, let's try to get a charter bus for, this year for the kids." So, there was a pretty substantial cost for that, and I let them know what was gonna happen, and they were extremely enthusiastic about wanting to help. You know, they wanted to donate money. They basically almost took over the whole thing for me, which was great, by the ways. But, so they set up a lot of things. They set up dinner we had at the Armory. They had a person that they knew that was a contact person for Chartwell's, which is the company that does the food catering for the schools. So, they set up the time for us to come to the Armory, they set up somebody with Chartwell's for me, and they provided the money to help me get this charter bus, which the kids really enjoyed, because we took the kids to Meyer again, because Meyer donated money again. So, we went shopping. Once the kids were done, we were able to just throw all the presents that they grabbed into the bottom of the bus in the luggage area. There was a nice little movie I got to play on, The Grinch, while we waited for the rest of the students to finish up. So, the bus took us to the Armory, and then once we got there, these guys just, they took over, and they did amazing work, because they wrapped all the presents for us. Couple, a couple police wives helped as well, but a majority of them were, was this group you see before you hear. They did all the wrapping with a smile on their face. They bought presents for each of the individual children as well, and they made sure that every kid got, got a present for the, excuse me, for themselves as well, because the kids, when they came and did the shopping, they bought for their families, moms, dads, brothers, sisters. So, they didn't technically leave with anything until this group stepped up and, and bought them some stuff. So, with that said, I just wanted to present Mr. Rubio, I suppose, since you're the leader of the group here with this certificate of appreciation, just for your tireless support of this, of the Shop with a Cop program, and your generous donation, which allowed us to buy that charter bus. So, I appreciate everything you guys did.
Thank you very much.
Come and look at me, kids. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'll get my Sherry going. Thank you.
Thank you so much. (applause) Madam Mayor, if I may, this is Baba Mary Cascaden, Cascaden, I'm sorry, Sue in the Red, Sue in Duke Markham. They helped out tremendously with the charter busing. These folks helped out with wrapping, moral support. Ms. Sherry and Mr. Lynn, very instrumental. I couldn't do it without them. I'd also like to recognize Lynn and Al, Lynn Retlouski. They weren't able to be with us tonight. And our, our buddy Steve Birdwell, you're all familiar with Steve. He, he, you know Steve. He had a sour look on his face, but he loved wrapping presents. And, uh, The Grinch. Sherry and Sue, exactly. Sherry and Sue bought a gift bag, like the officer said, for all the kids that went out and bought. Every child left with a gift, or a goodie bag, a swag bag, if you would.
Swag bag.
Candies, gift certificates, a toy. So, we did, we wanted to include and, and make every child feel loved and cared for in our community. And thank you again. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Sounds like you did make them feel very...
They had a blast.
Good job.
Even had DJ music, and thank you again.
Nice job, nice job. Thank you.
Okay.
This has been a happy evening so far.
Those were both wonderful.
I like this meeting so far.
We're talking about Christmas in June.
Yeah, I love it. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the communications for this evening.
Yes, the first communication is regarding the Freedom Festival. They're asking for the display of a banner from June 18th to July 2nd, the parade route on June 30th, beginning at 10:00 a.m., requested street and parking lot closures from June 28th through July 2nd, and a beverage tent from June 29th through July 1st. And this is all for the Cadillac Freedom Festival. And in the packet was another list, bullet list, of all the requests.
Page 33.
Page 33, thank you.
Ish. Plus or minus one.
What street closures are we looking at?
Cass between Elk Alley and Lake, Lake between Cass and Harris. And then for the fireworks, it's between the Chestnut Street, between the Boat Launch and the Cadillac Junior High School. The list is at the back of the paperwork for the...
Where is it at?
It's on page 33 in the packet.
33?
Yes. Well, it starts at 33.
Mine is at 17. Let me look in here.
On 6.
Oh. I just wanna make sure we're not closing the streets for like four days.
No.
Okay. It's just for the race, or what's it for?
It's for the Freedom Festival, and they've got Cass Street, Elk Alley, ending on Lake Street for the parade. And they've got that closed from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then Lake Street, Cass, Harris, from 7:00 to 12:00 p.m. And then Chestnut Street, Boat Launch area is...
For the fireworks?
It just says fireworks, but it doesn't have a time.
It's dusk.
It's what?
Fireworks or dusk.
Okay.
Like 10:00 p.m.
And then it'll be the normal parade route.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see anything out of the ordinary shape.
He's not being very responsive right now. Is there anybody here from the Freedom Festival?
I don't see anything.
I'll make a motion to approve, where are we?
We're on...
Is it everything?
DA, yeah.
Okay. To approve the display of a banner from June 18th, 2018, to July 2nd, 2018, the parade route on June 30th, beginning at 10:00 a.m., the requested street and parking lot closures from June 28th through July 2nd, and a beverage tent from June 29th through July 1st, 2018, for the Cadillac Freedom Festival.
Support. Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yeah.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. on Mondays, from July 2nd through August 13th, 2018, for the Clam Lake Band.
Beginning the second. I'll make that motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. on Mondays, between July 2nd, 2018, through August 13th, for the Clam Lake Band.
Marcus, I would like to make a note, there was some discussion last year about cars parking in the closed-off street area, and I'm wondering if we can do a better job of keeping track of that this year?
Well, not allowing it.
Not allowing it?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Support. Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on Thursdays, from June 21st through August 23rd, 2018, for Upbeat Cadillac.
Make a motion to approve the request from Upbeat Cadillac for the street closures as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on Thursdays, from June 21st through August 23rd, 2018, for Upbeat Cadillac. Make a motion to approve the request from Upbeat Cadillac for the street closures as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And the next is the appointment that was added at the beginning of the agenda. Being recommended to approve the appointment of Michael Hayes to the CWTA as a city-appointed member for a two-year term to expire on June 5th, 2020.
I would note for council that Mike Hayes is in the audience tonight also.
Is Mike Hayes here?
Yes.
Mike, would you like to come over if you have anything to say to the council?
Well, I'm looking forward to serving if you'll have me. I believe my experience can be of benefit to the community. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Well, I appreciate your willingness to serve. I did receive a recommendation letter from Carrie Thompson, that she felt like you would be a good fit.
I think Carrie's the director just for the public.
Right. Yeah. Questions?
Yeah, Michael, thank you. I know Mike well, and I've kinda put my heart and soul into the CWTA, so I'm excited that younger blood is coming in and working on the board, and excited to see him move forward.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Michael
Hayes to the CWTA as a city-appointed member for a two-year term to expire on June 5th, 2020.
Support.
I would like to just say, before we take that vote, I would like to say thank you to Steve. Some time ago, we, how many years have you been on there now?
Oh, gosh, maybe...
Six? No, five?
Five, yeah.
Five years ago, we, we voted to have you serve with the CWTA, and the CWTA with the new director and the new board has done so many wonderful things over that last five years, so I wanna say thank you.
Well, thank you. And Carrie, our director, is absolutely spectacular, so...
Yeah, she's dynamic, it's all get out.
Yep. Good. Okay.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you, mayor, members of the city council. The city manager's report this evening has one item. The city manager's report this evening has one item. It's titled "Medical Marijuana: Introductory Discussion Regarding Process and Future Engagement With the Community." And that's really the merit of what I'd like for the city council to discuss tonight. That being, not that we should be getting into the conversation about whether we should or shouldn't allow for medical marijuana facilities within our community, but rather how we would like to best engage our constituents to get a feel for what our community would like to see with respect to medical marijuana facilities within our community. And then, once we have that data and that feedback, bring it back to the city council for their discussion at that point on whether or not we should or shouldn't essentially get into the business, and then what that process would be. To tip that conversation off, I'm going to refer to the council communication that I put in the packet. The packet tonight was nearly 450 pages long because of all of the supplemental information about this topic that I included. And it was included so that it could become part of the public record and so that folks in the community can access it. All this information is available on the city's website, cadillac-mi.net, simply listed under tonight's agenda packet link. But just in summary, I want to start by talking about how the state of Michigan put in place the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, or the MMFLA. And within that act, there are five categories. There's a category for growers, processors, provisioning centers, secure transporters, and safety compliance facilities. And so, the city, should it choose to opt-in, because in accordance with the app, the default position is that you're opted out. So, if a community wants to get into the business of having any or all of the above different types of facilities operating within their borders, you first have to opt-in. And when you do so, you do so by ordinance. And within that ordinance, you're going to stipulate whether or not you're going to want to have one of those five, or all of those five, or some combination thereof. You're even going to get into stipulating how many of those different types of categories of processors or provisioning centers or whatnot you'd like to have. You could even go so far as to talking about how far away from one another you'd like to see them, how far away from one another you'd like to see them from each other, or from other-like businesses. So, there's some layers of complexity with regard to this, and certainly the ability to customize a program that the city council should get to that point where it may want to get into the business can do that. I can also mention as well that the state of Michigan, as of today, has still yet to issue a single license to any business operating within any of those categories. In fact, just last week, they issued yet another set of emergency rules regarding this whole topic that essentially gives themselves to the middle of September to issue licenses. Now, what does that mean as far as the city council goes and what the city is looking at doing? It means the following. There really isn't a major time crunch. We need to do this right. We should take our time in having the conversation, take our time in having the community provide feedback. And the reason why I say that is because even if, as of today, which isn't possible, but even if as of today, we had an ordinance put in place, we had all these questions answered, and we're moving forward to allow X, Y, or Z, because we did not have an ordinance put in place as of the middle of December last year, there still cannot be a business under any of those five categories getting a license from the state to operate until they actually start issuing licenses. And the state has said that they may not be issuing licenses until the middle of September. They say by or before. Before, they said by or before June 15th. Now, they're saying by or before September 15th. So, you know, it could mean before. It could mean that they're going to issue another set of emergency rules and kick it out further. We just don't know. At the same time that all of this is happening regarding the Medical Marijuana Act that's in place right now, there is enough signatures to have a ballot initiative regarding recreational marijuana put on the ballot this coming November. How those two will interplay, if that should get approved, is yet to be known. I will advise that I've heard, coming out of contacts I have in the Capitol, that instead of it being an opt-in program, it'll be an opt-out program, meaning that every community in the state will automatically be opted in to having to allow for recreational marijuana sales. And if they so choose to not be in, then they'll have to opt out. I'm just adding that, not because it needs to be a part of the focus for your conversation tonight, but just to share with you that there's a lot of moving pieces that are still out there that frankly, I cannot advise as to how these things are going to happen until they happen. Regarding tonight's conversation, what I'm hoping the city council can gain some consensus on is that we would like to communicate with our constituents. We have the opportunity to insert a survey-type postcard in our utility bills that will go out to every customer of the city. Customers are defined as, you know, both residential, commercial, and industrial property alike. We can add a host of little checkoff boxes like, you know, do you think we should, you know, be involved, yes or no? And if yes, how? And we can use some common language to clarify what that means and ask people to get us that information back. That's an opportunity for us to talk about. We can have a public forum, so perhaps, once we get information back from a survey, we can then have a public forum, whether it's in this facility or we look at going to a larger one, where we can share the results in a public way and provide opportunity for people to address the city council with their ideas or questions about this topic. Following that public forum, the city council, perhaps at that night or even at another night, can then decide whether or not they wish to proceed, and if so, how. If the ultimate city council determination is to proceed with allowing this in any way, shape, or form, then that does, as I mentioned before, require an ordinance. And because it requires an ordinance, it does require an actual official public hearing. So, you'll have that process. It'll also require the planning commission to get involved, and they also have public hearing processes as a part of their responsibilities. And that's because they're going to need to come up with a recommendation to amend our zoning code as to where the use would be allowed. So, whatever that use might be, there might be more than one amendment to the zoning code. So, I know I just threw a lot of information out, but trying to focus it back in, what I'm asking for this evening is for a general conversation regarding how the council would like us to try to gather some information and how to bring this back. And certainly, you know, another option out there is just continuing with the wait-and-see approach. You know, there will be a time, I will say, that you will need to make, I think, a decision, especially with respect to the recreational marijuana piece and how that interplays with everything. We just don't know where that's at yet. So, with that, I will stop talking. I'm certainly here as a resource, and I certainly can jump in the conversation whenever you'd like me to.
I certainly don't think that we can have any in-depth conversation with the council until we understand more of the data and what the thought is out in the community. So, I like the thought of doing that survey through the use of our utility billings. But I also want to remind everyone of the group that was down at the Capitol Conference that was willing to facilitate the said forums within our community. I think that if that's the direction that the council wants to go, once we've gathered our information, that we should reach out to them and ask them to do that for us, because they have experience with that topic, and they have experience with those forums in other communities.
I agree absolutely with the mayor. I think that the first and most important thing on the subject is to get information to our citizens so they can look at what this means. We've looked at it briefly, and there's so much to it. So, I like, Marcus, that you have the information on the website for people to be able to look at, and if we can give them avenues to get more information, and then invite them to give us feedback, even more than... I like the idea of the card, but reaching out to all of us through our emails to either seek information from us or to give us their position on it. And I really like the mayor's thought on, I think that company would be wonderful then to do a forum, because then we can actually have an informed discussion. Once we've done that.
Well, and even for the planning commission, you know, getting not only the people from the community, but the people from this council and then the planning commission, and making sure that those two groups of people are as educated as they can be on the decisions that have to be made within the community. And another thought I had too, while you were talking, was the fact that, yeah, we could wait, but we know we're going to have these discussions. We're going to have to have these discussions. So, you know, I guess I'd like us to think about, you know, rather than dragging our feet, you know, maybe it is time to get started and start gaining information from the community on how they feel about this.
I like the idea of providing education with the forums. The thing that concerns me about sending out a postcard survey initially is I think that people are kind of opinionated about this one way or the other at the offset. And those are the kind of folks that are going to be responding to that survey, whereas I'd rather see us have good dialogue with people and have information there at the same time. And I don't think it's just going to be a one-time deal. I, you know, this is something that we all have to look at as a community and have a lot of discussion around to do it right. And I really welcome that discussion.
Is the... If I'm hearing you correctly, councilmember, your suggestion would be, before we issue out a survey through the utility billing, which we can do on a monthly basis, we first facilitate perhaps a community forum where we're inviting the community to come out to get some information. I like the idea, Mayor, that you had suggested about contacting the company that was a part of the panel.
Was it Weed Maps?
It was Weed Maps. But my suggestion would be that I contact the Michigan Municipal League. Let them help create that panel so that they can connect with the Weed Maps folks and the other folks that brought the other side of the coin, so that you have that balanced approach to help facilitate the conversation.
And maybe we use that communication tool through the utility billings to let people know when these forums are going to be. So, we're not sending out a survey, but we're not only putting it in the paper or on our website, but we're also sending everybody a notice that... Because I agree with Councilmember Spohman that this isn't going to be a one-and-done conversation. So, you know, as soon as we can start getting them scheduled, then, you know, we're going to have the first one, and then that's going to generate more people that are going to come to the second one. And, you know, I think we need to continue having those conversations until we feel like we're just hearing the same things, because then we know that we've done a good job of educating the community.
We can potentially have survey cards available at the forum as well.
Well, perhaps the facilitators may have a different tool that they already have, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. They may have something that they've used in other communities.
Maybe. I just... What I'm trying to be able to do here, though, is really try to test the... How do I want to say? The residents, whether they're resident, residential, commercial, industrial of the city versus really getting feedback from outside of the city. I just want to make sure that the city council's being responsive specifically to your constituencies. It's not that I don't care about what other people...
I agree, and I appreciate you saying that. When we have this community conversation...
It will be open to the public.
People have to understand that we really need to hear from the residents of the city of Cadillac, not just everybody who has a Cadillac address.
Right.
You know, because that's going to be handled differently in their... In other jurisdictions.
Well, and I... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What Councilmember Spohman is saying, though, struck a chord with me that, and I think you're going to get the best litmus test if we have information for education for people first.
First.
Rather than the initial emotional reaction to the subject.
Right. So, maybe we have a couple of sessions first, and then we do the litmus test with the citizens in Cadillac.
And I think at a forum, questions can be asked by anybody in the community at large, not just the city. But I think the main focus should be educating what this is and what it will mean for the community, so that it's not just a debate on yes or no, that it's an information...
Educating.
Gathering, information... What is it? Information sharing, meetings for everybody. But then, the piece about just the residents, put those in the bills after, like you said, after the communication.
So, how many forums do you think...
Eight, 10. I'm kidding. I don't know.
Before we... Or in total, or before we do the survey?
Well, right, before the survey. So, obviously, I need to make a phone call to see if this is something that these groups should be willing to help us participate in. And then, if we can recreate the panel to a certain degree, you know, these folks might be coming, you know, from Kalamazoo or from other places.
Yeah, there might be a cost related to it.
Well, it might be difficult to get the same panel both times.
I don't think we need the same panel. I think with the panel... I'm sorry to interrupt you, Marcus.
No, no, no. I was just trying to...
I think that what the panel that we got to here was, kind of addressed multiple sides of the issue. I think that's important, but I don't think we need to get the... Who was the prosecutor from Kalamazoo or whatever? We have people here in our community that could take different sides. So, and I think that might be, you know, to demonstrate knowledge within the community. But I think the experts, that some of the experts that they had, the one company that said they have that, what was it?
Weed Maps.
Weed Maps. Where they have the... This is how you do it, the step-by-step to present it to your community.
Well, and I think one other thing we can offer to the Michigan Municipal League is if they help get those panels here for us, that we would be willing to serve in other communities if they need a panel. Once we've figured out how we're going to do it, then we offer to help fill those seats for other communities when they need to have those conversations.
And there's also, right now, and, Marcus, kind of thing off the top of my head is, we have this group that could do one panel in type of meeting. It might be interesting to bring in a few of the cities or municipalities that have either opted in or opted out as a second one, to hear their reasons and basis.
I'm glad you brought that up, because this whole plan of Mount Pleasant is really nice. There's a couple of really nice plans in here. There's other communities that have been through this, and maybe they can provide us some support, too. That's the benefit of the Michigan Municipal League, is that we all share our experiences and learn from one another.
Well, yeah, I think that if we do... If we go ahead and do two of the sessions, you know, and let the facilitators know that we want to get past the first two, and so we need to give everybody a good understanding of all five of those things, you know? And if we can give good education in those first two sessions, then I would feel comfortable doing the survey within the city after those first two.
What type of time spacing between the two sessions would you like me to look at?
A month.
Should they be both in the same month?
I think they should both be in the same month, just to... Because otherwise, we're looking at, you know, 2022 or whatever. If they were both in the same month, and we got a... We would have to find a place, and...
I'm thinking the high school auditorium.
Yeah. And different evenings, not like one week Tuesday and then two weeks later a Tuesday, so that there... So, the people that can't do a Tuesday can come to one maybe on a Wednesday or bowling night or something.
But within the same month, maybe a couple of weeks apart.
That's what I'm thinking. To build, you know... Because people will be talking, if it's too much time in between, folks may not come to the second one. So, we're curious.
Okay. So, again, a lot of information is in your packet.
380 pages. Thank you very much.
Yes. There's information from the cannabis legal group. There's information from the Weed Maps group. And if you were to just simply go on the internet and do a browser search, there are a host of other companies that offer it. Weed Maps just coincidentally happened to be one of the co-sponsors... Weed Maps just coincidentally happened to be one of the co-sponsors of the Capitol event in Lansing through the Michigan Municipal League a few months ago, and that's why they were part of the panel and whatnot. But we will contact, I'll contact my lead connections, and we'll see how we can get this thing put together for some time this summer.
Fabulous, thanks.
Yeah, and, you know, I agree with Carla that, at first I thought, let's just take a wait-and-see, because it's, you know, the recreational piece is going to be on the ballot in November, but I don't know. I really want to start to engage the community in some kind of conversation related to this. And, you know, we'll be even better prepared to make some decisions following the November election, I think, if we do this now.
And just to be clear, as confusing as all of this is, the recreational initiative is separate from the act that's already in place.
Right, totally understand that.
And if it gets approved in November, or gets approved in some other way even before then possibly, through the legislature, all of the communities across the state are going to need to scramble to either opt out if they didn't want to be in, because it flips the default position from the medical side, and if they do want to be in, are going to need to scramble and place with respect to amending their zoning to decide where that use should be allowed. So it's going to, it's going to be a hectic fall for everybody in the state.
Well, back to what I said earlier, we're going to have to have the conversation, so I would rather be proactive and have the resources down at the Michigan Municipal League and these companies available to us for our education process, rather than waiting until everybody's scrambling, and then we can't find resources to help us educate.
Yeah, because we won't be able to find the people for the forums if we wait until November, yeah.
Did you get what you needed?
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm good.
Okay, then, at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order if anyone has anything.
Mayor, I have a couple of items I wanted to toss out. First, I may have mentioned this before, but I want to mention it again. The older bathroom facilities at the Kenwood Park are being, well, actually, they've been demolished, and new facilities are being constructed. During this interim period of time, there is no power to the Lakeside Pavilion, and likewise, there is no power to the parking area, so there's no parking lot lights available. This will all get restored once the building is back up this summer, but for the moment, there's no, there's no power that's available. So I just wanted to get that out publicly and certainly thank people for their patience.
Did we get more porta-potties out there?
There are a couple of more porta-potties that are out there as well. Also wanted to mention that we have what could be an incredible opportunity coming our way. This is a rendering of the Claire Castle. The Claire Castle is a senior living apartment development in Clare, Michigan, that the developer has contacted me with interest of building a very similar development here in our community along Mitchell Street, in the vacant lot in between the former Hagstrom Flower Shop on the south end and a former tattoo parlor on the north end. This facility is a very nice one. I personally had a chance to tour it last week. I took some snapshots and did provide them to you in correspondence earlier today. The facility in Cadillac could potentially be a home for 40-plus apartments. 55 and older would be the requirement for you to get in. It's also built through the MISTHA program, so there would be some income requirements as well for you to get in. This is something that I think would really be a great, and Chris, I don't know if you wanted to get a picture of this or not, but a great opportunity to really ignite redevelopment activities on the south end of Mitchell Street in our downtown. I am in the process of finalizing an opportunity for members of the council to get a tour, basically a drop-in time for next Tuesday afternoon. Once I have that established, I'll send an email out tomorrow. So it'll be a week from tomorrow would be the opportunity to go see the Claire Castle and check it out. The idea would be to have this on the city council's next agenda for discussion, and likely to look at setting a public hearing date for your second meeting in July. The public hearing would be required to make tweaks to the current code that we have regarding this type of housing. The code currently defines seniors, I believe, as either 62 or 55, so that would need to be amended, because this is a product for somebody that's 55 or older. Additionally, the code specifically requires it to be a rehabilitation of an existing facility, not the construction of a new facility. And so, if we're looking at moving this forward in earnest, we need to start that time clock accordingly. So stay tuned, please, for an email coming from me. The backside is just simply a very, very conceptual site plan that would show orientation of the building and all the parking that's necessary. This is already essentially to code based upon the current zoning that we have out there and the current parking requirements. But obviously, this has not gone through any staff review or anything at this point. So the first step would be to move it forward legislatively. So I'll pass this around briefly.
So would this be called Cadillac Castle?
I was just going to ask that.
I don't know. I think we'll get to that point if we have favorable consideration in moving it forward, but right now, I couldn't tell you. But I'd encourage you to also look at the pictures that I provided. It's just a link to an album, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to let the council know that on the 18th of June, we are kicking off Mayor's Fit City Challenge 4, and so we have some exciting new things that are coming up, like geocaching and scavenger hunts, and just talked with Coach Ellenboss about providing some free classes so people could learn how to play pickleball. And so, and Nine and Ten is on board again to do their big field day. We do hope to be able to do it on the front lawn of the Heritage House. This year, last year, the weather prevented us from doing that, but I'm excited to kick it off, and I just wanted to let everyone know it'll run from June 15th to June 18th. So, and we're always looking for new things to get people up and out of their houses. So if you guys can think of anything, let me know, and we'll add it to our calendars. Additionally, I wanted to remind everybody of the 4th of July parade that weekend that we talked about, that we would like the council to be in that parade. So put that on your calendars, please, that'll be on the Saturday.
June 30th, right?
June 30th.
Always a good time.
I thought I'd be back by the 4th. I was planning, I'm going to be back by the 4th of July, but, of course.
Yeah, well, it'll be fun, and if you want to have, you know, Lucas in the parade, my grandson's going to be here, so I'm going to have them pushing his stroller, and so have family just throwing candy and stuff. It's always nice to get out as a group and meet the community.
Yeah, it is.
Did anybody else have anything for good of the order?
I'm sorry.
Okay, if not, then we need a motion to go into closed session this evening.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session for a strategy and negotiation session connected with a collective bargaining agreement, and invite Todd Kiway, Human Resources Generalist. So I'm back there.
Support. Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.